Okay, now that it's seven o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. We will begin this Tuesday, April sixteenth, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, move right along into roll call this evening. Yes, and please make sure your mic is lit. All right. Commissioner Bowie's not here. Commissioner Inger?
Present.
Commissioner Faulkner?
Present.
Vice Chair Pfizer?
Present.
Commissioner Manzner's gone. Secretary Peterman?
Here.
Commissioner Kea, I don't see. Mayor Turnbow?
Present.
And Mr. Wiggins is here as well. All right, moving right along. No personal appearances scheduled for this evening. So that'll take us into our consent agenda, at which point I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting, or discuss them, or make changes if necessary.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Faulkner.
I move we approve minutes from our March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Faulkner, second by Secretary Peterman, to approve the minutes from March sixteen, twenty twenty-one. All those in favor? Seeing all hands raised, we will go all in favor, none opposed, no abstentions. All right, and that's six zero for the record there. All right, moving along. No unfinished business tonight. However, we do have new business, which is case two one zero zero one, the South Town Storage Site Plan. And will we be starting with staff report, or with the applicant to present their case?
The applicant, please.
The applicant, perfect. If the applicant would please come forward to the podium and present your case for the South Town Storage Site Plan, please. For the record, please state your name and address, so that way we have it recorded, please.
Hello?
Perfect. And you can, it's bendy, so you can bring it up a little bit if you need to.
Yeah, my name's Bill Brighton. Address forty-eight thirty-two Southwest Leafwing Drive, Lee Summit, at Rain Tree Lake. Well, I have a contiguous property with this four and a half acres that I've started doing storage a couple of years ago, and had success with it, so I bought this property with doing pretty much the same thing, other than it's going to be covered parking, non-existing facilities, just outdoor, sort of something more to offer to the public, and there seems to be a pretty good demand for that nowadays. So, I was trying to keep the, these are basically carport units, keeping them in the backside of the property, and then that would be the first phase of a couple of the buildings, want to make sure that they do well before I spend a lot of money that I don't have. So, anyway, the that's about it, really. I mean, I don't know what else you want to hear from me on that, but...
Obviously, we still have our staff report, but do any commissioners have any immediate questions for the applicant?
Yeah, Mr. Bright, and so the, the, the storage itself is designed for vehicles only, is that correct?
Yes.
So you're, it, it's not a property storage thing, that, that we're talking about recreational vehicles, like trailers, pull behinds, things like that, that would, that would be stored at your location, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Once in a while, you have a few, like, construction-type people that might have a trailer or something that I could see. That I, I really want to stay away from that unless I need to.
Right.
I mean, they're in and out a lot more.
Right. So, but, but most, most everything that you're going to have stored on your facility's got wheels on it, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Any other commissioners for the moment? All right, Mr. Bright, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to staff for their staff report.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. This is case number two one zero zero one, site plan approval for South Town Storage. The applicant is seeking to obtain site plan approval for Phase One and Phase Two of a site plan that includes three open-air vehicle storage buildings, and the buildings in Phase One include seventy stalls with an onsite enclosed bathroom, shower, and ice machine. The area is largely surrounded by other industrial that's been there, Casey's and the Brightside Law Office came in afterwards and rezoned it to commercial, just there at the intersection, but the rest is all industrial. A couple of things to note. The Engineering Division of Public Works reviewed the application and determined that it complies with all of the city codes. For off-site, off-street parking requirements, the first phase of this site plan is outlined in red, I guess on the screen, but is two buildings, and it does not include the office building. Staff determined that there's adequate space between the buildings, which are open-air units, to allow the pull-through of vehicles, which can allow for people to park while they unhitch a trailer, or, you know, drop off an RV unit or something like that. There's enough room for a small car to be there while that happens. So no parking is required. Similar storage facilities without office space haven't been required to accommodate parking, so no parking was deemed necessary with just the first phase, which is, again, just the two buildings towards the rear. In terms of landscaping, as part of Phase One, the minimum six foot of landscaping area is provided along Highway fifty-eight, which will be, you know, up towards the north as open space, and then there's a fifteen-foot landscaping area along the rear property line. Future phases have the landscaped area along Highway fifty-eight as a stormwater detention basin, but then there's also going to be trees in the landscape plan that's with your documents. It also allows for some other plantings if needed. There's also a foundation wall along the west side of the property line in lieu of perimeter landscaping, and those areas and their necessary landscaping improvements will be considered with a future phase. As I kind of said, this is for Phase One, which does not include the office building. In the future, and one of the conditions of approval is that the building elevations for the office building will need to come back before Planning Commission as part of a site plan amendment. There are, staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission accept the staff-proposed findings of fact and approve case number two one zero zero one, South Town Storage Site Plan, subject to eleven standard conditions, and then two additional conditions. One, that the building elevations come back before Planning and Zoning as part of Phase Two, and then a shared east-west drive connection, sort of parallel to Highway fifty-eight, must be completed prior to a certificate of occupancy of Phase Two. The connection is the responsibility of the land owner, and will start wherever the drive connection ends on the adjacent Brightside Daycare land, and it must continue along to the west side, west property line. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. I did have one real quick. Could you explain the foundation wall, instead of landscaping? What, is it a, is it a physical height that allows that to be in lieu of landscaping, or what makes it in lieu of? I mean, a foundation wall, I mean, I guess, we're talking about a little two-foot, flat concrete wall, so therefore don't need landscaping, or what? Anything that you can expand upon, please?
Sure. So, there is a little bit of a buffer there along the side of the property, but the feeling of staff was that, given that it's a storage facility and everything around it is also either storage or other industrial, that perhaps a landscape side there didn't, didn't allow for enough security. So, if, if the Planning Commission feels like that is something that should be necessary, we can address it when he comes forward for Phase Two as part of the site plan amendment, because he's only doing the first two, which will, so that will stay for the Phase One as grass and landscaping. So we can readdress it as part of Phase Two if, if you would like.
Okay. I just didn't know if it was implied that it was going to be like a tall, concrete barrier versus, I mean, when, when a foundation wall, I guess it didn't really provide much descriptor of what that is. I mean, foundation wall could be twelve inches high, or it could be ten feet high, so I guess I was curious if there's more info on...
I think it is six to ten feet high, but Mr. Bright would have to answer. I, I do believe he, he has the specifics of it, though.
Yeah, I would assume that the, the concrete wall has a fence atop it as well to, to extend security for the facility. Is that correct, gentlemen? It'll have a, it'll have a fence along the top of it?
Exactly. I mean, I've seen places that, like, there's a facility at one hundred and forty-third and one fifty highway, that their whole wall is a structural foundation. I mean, it's just a big
Right.
ten-foot concrete wall, but...
I guess this is still, okay. Yeah, the, the wall on the, the south end...
Katie, we don't have it on our screen, so the people on the dais cannot see what you're pointing out up there. I didn't know if you wanted to make their screens hot so they can see what you're...
Well, or if you're on the PDF, it's page nine of the PDF, or page three on the site plan on the...
You wouldn't necessarily see her cursor, though, moving.
Excellent point.
As she, as he described it, she was using the cursor to kind of point it out for you.
So we're talking about this western side?
Correct.
Which is directly adjacent to the Glen Lad Storage Units, famously referred to as the Johnny Robinson Storage Facility.
Yes.
Now, so the south end of that wall will probably be, I don't know, a couple of feet out of the ground, but by the time it gets to the north end, it's somewhere around eight foot or something like that, but it won't even be visible from fifty-eight.
Yeah, I just, I just was curious, you know, why it was in lieu of landscaping, just to be more descriptive of what the actual wall itself was, so that's good enough.
I think the question you had about a fence is, you know, when the time comes that that gets built and incorporated in the project, you know, there would be a fence to make sure somebody didn't fall off of it, for sure.
So with, with Phase One, so the, the easternmost building, the large building down the middle, those two are part of part one of Phase One, and then the western future building, three. So there will be a fence, a temporary fence in between what I would call the middle stall and then the western stall, and then that fence would be removed to allow for the western stall at a future time?
Once the wall gets built, then there'd be a fence on there, but the Lad store more, they have an existing fence, so that the grade would be tapered off from the elevations that are in red.
Sorry, the red line covers on, on the, the plans. It shows a detail, like a checkered line, and the arrows point to it saying fence, so I didn't know if that's... Yeah, please show which one.
That's just a phase one.
Okay.
Yeah. So there's an existing fence there, so the ratings are not applicable, and they wouldn't be...
Mr. Chairman, he needs to get the mic.
Yeah, I need to, sorry about that. That answered my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Faulkner.
Kind of a follow-up to your question about the west side, but my question is over on the east side, where the, I'll call it the west daycare building. Is, is there to be any screening between this proposed facility and the, and the west daycare building?
I am putting up a fence there, yes.
Okay. Was it shown on the plans? I didn't ever notice it, but I'm just asking.
There was a small detail about a fence there, because we've talked with the South Metro Fire Department, because they want to make sure that there's a gate access there, so that they can get in for emergencies.
I think I did read about a fire gate, but, or a keyed, but I didn't put it all together. So, just to clarify, you mentioned in the staff report that part of that corner is commercial zoning now. The majority of the surrounding zoning is, is M-one, but I think you said the Casey's was, had been rezoned to a C, I guess C-two, is that correct? And, and I don't know what zoning the daycare has.
That's correct. They're, yeah, they're, the daycare, and then I think there's some law offices to, they're east, and then Casey's were all rezoned after the fact. The rest of it has been industrial and M-one.
But the, but the daycare is a C-two?
I, I don't know. I'd have to look.
Well, okay. I, I, my concern really just goes back to compatibility of the uses, you know, the, the storage facility against a storage facility doesn't bother me at all, but the storage facility to the daycare seemed to me like city code might require some screening there.
The majority of the lot, well, I guess half, is against another storage facility. So right down this eastern line, south of the daycare, is storage.
Sure.
It's staff's opinion that because they were rezoned after this property was already industrial, that it's an, and it's an approved use, that, no, there didn't necessarily, the fence serves as enough. It only needs a screen right there, because then the rest of it would be open parking lot
Right.
at some point.
Okay. Well, I guess I'm more comfortable some thought's been put into this.
Yes, sir.
Okay. My, my other question, and I think you touched on it. So, eventually, this proposed facility will have access north to fifty-eight highway, and, and I'm not sure from the lines, it looked like that might be a later phase. So to start with, the access will be the road to the east over to J?
That's correct.
And, and that road, I guess, basically comes in, ends at this property. So the road is already there, and, and you, and you own that property to the south. My, my question really, I guess, came down to, did there need to be an easement, access easement? Did I miss it in the plans? But, you know, as long as the two properties are under same ownership, it's probably not a concern, but if, if, if they're separate tracts and one sold, then that, that was my concern on making sure that this proposed facility continued to have access to the east, because I'm, I'm guessing that that east access is planned to continue into the future, even though there will be access to the north to fifty-eight?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And there's an existing easement there.
Okay. All right.
Although it, I, I may have to extend that easement through how to explain it? There, there's probably a, a couple hundred feet where I'd have to extend that
Okay.
which is, you know, something that can be done.
As long as you own both properties, I'm sure it wouldn't be a problem. It's just, in my mind, these are, these are separate tracts. One could be sold separately from the other, and I just didn't want us to find ourselves twenty years from now with and, and by that time, you'd probably develop the next phase to the north, and you'd have access off fifty-eight anyway, so might be a moot point. Okay, thank you.
Quick question. Right here, Bowie.
Oh, Bowie.
If I would, if I may.
Welcome. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Similar to Commissioner Faulkner, just had, as I was looking through this, everything looked pretty thorough and everything, but I was concerned about the daycare next to it, and the type of fence is chain link, is that right? What's the, what's the type of fence that's going to be between the, the portion of the?
No, it'll be, I don't know if you're familiar with my existing facility?
I think I have.
It goes out to J Highway, it's got the gym on the front.
Uh-huh.
If you look down that drive, you'll see the, the fencing I've done, and it's very nice.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you just make sure you stay close to, a little closer to the mic?
Yeah, so, you know, it's a, I mean, it's a tall vinyl fence, and it, it, very expensive.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I, anything I do is going to be like that, it's just...
Okay, that, that's really the only thing that I was thinking of, similar to Commissioner Faulkner, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Secretary Peterman?
Yeah, I'm just curious, maybe I'm missing something, but which phase and what's the logic of needing bathroom, shower, and ice machine?
It's just an amenity that has proven to be attractive to camping. Like, if somebody's, you know, wants to spend another couple hours at the lake, they can come home, jump in a shower, or go to work, you know, and be ready to go.
So it's a, it's a common thing with what you're doing that other people have done?
Well, some of the ones I modeled, I'm trying to pick, I want my facility to be the best one there is, so I'm doing things that probably most people wouldn't do, but I think I'm going to be able to, you know, command the market a little bit better with...
My concern would be that it just, that it don't become a homeless shelter, you know?
Well, yeah.
That's, the fencing and all the other stuff goes along with it, too, so...
Yeah. Yeah, I've heard of that in some of these storage places.
Thank you.
I actually drive through every day and look at every door on the camper to see if they've been open.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Faulkner?
One, one thing I might note, this is not really a question, but I drove by, and if you saw a strange vehicle coming up the road off of, off of J Highway, that could have been me. But just for future reference for the commission, I did notice that your fence, which you said is very expensive, and it's, it's, I can't imagine any better screening than that, but the height of these RVs and such, you really can't screen the top part of them. It's, it's just, it's one of those where if this were not in a location that already had existing storage facilities right up against it, I think I'd probably have more concerns about screening, because I don't know how you'd screen this, for instance, from neighborhood residential or something like that. It's if, if, if you look at how high the RVs are versus that expensive fence, I, you just, you can't really screen them effectively. So I'm just noting that for the record. It's not an objection.
Well, that, that actually was going to bring, goes along with a question that I had. What is the height of these structures? Are these twenty-foot tall?
They have fourteen-foot clearance, that's basically so a cam, any camper won't get hit the top of it when they back...
So the top of the roof will be about fifteen, sixteen feet, maybe?
Yeah, there's...
Do we, are any other structures in the area even remotely close to, I mean, I guess with maybe the roof of, once you get to the peak of like a daycare? I just, because that's one of the things that, you know, the other facilities, if they're eight or ten-foot tall, if everything's kind of a one-story, then all of a sudden, we just have this kind of thing sticking up a little high out of the sky.
So across the street is another storage facility. They currently have open-air parking of RVs and similar cars and things like that, so this is then taking that idea and putting a roof on it. So it's not an uncommon thing for the area. That stuff is all on gravel and is temporary use. This is a permanent use. And then I, I don't know for sure, and maybe Bill could further answer, but I do believe storage units themselves are taller. They're around twelve feet anyway, but perhaps I'm mistaken. So the storage units across the street would be of not overly different height.
Similar, okay.
Compared to the one that the American self-storage, the one off the highway, the newer one?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to be as high as that.
Okay.
I will say that my existing facility has been at campers next to that daycare for the last three years, so...
Question that I had, more, more for city staff. So the whole, the whole facility is gravel, and then it looks like it, it grades to the north to the detention pond. So there's, there's no drainage other than natural gravity on the site, and then the, the buildings themselves don't, I mean, do they have gutters to help drain away? You know, I just think of a giant, you know, compacted gravel surface with no real drains, if we have any drainage issues, and kind of an impervious surface, and has the city engineers, they have any issues or concerns with, with drainage and...
No, we spent a significant amount of time talking with him and his engineer to make sure that the drainage was appropriate, then this, the sort of base inner detention area in the front then has a drain that drains to, I think it's right off of the property, there's, is where it then drains to a manhole, or a storm culvert.
Okay.
So, but no, there are no, not concerns regarding drainage.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowie, did you have your hand?
One, one more thing that I, I was thinking about a couple of days ago was, whenever you have storage units, you typically have trash, right? There's a, sometimes there's an issue with trash, or every, every storage unit I've ever seen, there's been, you know, some trash laying around here and there, people coming and out of their storage units, whatever. I was curious, why do you guys decide not to do any additional trash bins on the first phase?
Well, I mean, I have one of my existing, and they don't, I don't even allow them to use it, and I don't have any issues as it is.
Okay. And it hasn't been a problem in...
No, I mean, every once in a while, there'll be a few things, but nothing, you know, significant.
But it's planned for Phase Two, perhaps?
I'm sorry?
Is it going to be a part of Phase Two, perhaps?
Yeah, there would be. I actually haven't thought of a place yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions from the commissioners? Okay, I would entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Make a motion that the Planning and Zoning Commission accept the staff-proposed findings of fact and approve case number two one zero zero one, South Town Storage Site Plan, subject to the conditions as listed.
I'll second.
If it could, one of the reasons why I really feel like, well, I'll go ahead and let you repeat that.
Thank you, sir. No worries. So the motion is to accept the staff finding as fact and forward case two one zero zero one to council with the subject, with the conditions stated by staff.
Mr. Chairman, being a site plan, it's actually final approval at this level, so it doesn't get forward.
Doesn't need to forward, okay. So accept staff finding of fact and approve case two one zero zero one with the the conditions stated by staff. Does that sound right? Okay, and do we have any discussion?
Yeah, you know, one of the, I looked at this pretty closely, given the comments at our last Planning and Zoning meeting, and I, I had some trepidation in the beginning, but I know the Brights, and I know the quality of the work that they've done in and around our city over the years, and I'm quite confident that not only will this be a nice facility, but it's needed. If anybody has paid any attention at all over the past year through the COVID pandemic, is that a lot of folks went out and bought travel trailers, tons of them, and we've got a lot of them on our streets and driveways in our community. And I believe this gives us an opportunity for self-storage for those items here in our community, and it's actually helping our community with giving us that kind of storage facility that's particularly needed at this time, so I, that's one of the reasons why I went... So I, that's one of the reasons why I went ahead and jumped out there and made the motion to approve. And, and we'll be voting yes on this item tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? All right. That being said, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seeing all hands raised, there will be no nays and no abstentions. It'll pass. Let's see, we've got seven now, seven, zero.
And did you note for the record that Commissioner Bowie arrived about, I don't know, ten after seven?
Yeah, she got it.
I left my mask at home, so I had to go back and get it.
Very good. Yes, well, it is noted now for the record. Thank you, Commissioner Faulkner. All right, all right. Thank you very much. Uh, moving right along, we'll move into our city council report. Mr. Catterett, would that be to you?
Thank you, Joe. Thanks, guys.
See you later.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, the only meeting of council held, a regular meeting of council held, was March twenty-second, and there were actually no development applications on that agenda. It was a very short agenda, so nothing to report.
Very good. How about moving right along into staff report, please?
Thank you, sir. Um, I wanted, first wanted to thank everybody for, um, that came to the Universal Design Open House. That was yesterday. I apologize for not being there. Pinnacle Homes with Wade Beck was a great builder to work with. I think, uh, the whole intention of the house was to make the items actually not noticeable, um, which I, so I think it was a big success, uh, but, and he's already incorporating things that he's done in that house to future houses, including his own. So I, again, I appreciate everyone that came out on April tenth, which is this Saturday, from one to three. There will be an open house again for the public to see the house. So you're welcome to come again or kind of spread the word. We also, we tentatively have a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on April twentieth. We're waiting for some revisions for the final plat that was applied for, for that date, um, and haven't received them yet, so we'll let you know, but tentatively kind of keep it on your schedule. And I think that's it.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yes.
Sorry, I apologize. I just, I did want to clarify that, um, Commissioner Manser is, he abstained from the whole meeting because of, uh, potential conflict of interest, so.
Okay.
Um, I did want to clarify that he was abstaining because, uh, his bank was giving the loan.
So obviously, Mr. Zerzant here, but in that instance, so would that then be, that vote would, would be reflected as seven, zero, and one? Or is he just abstaining from the meeting, so it's not, he's not actually physically present, so it doesn't really matter?
It, it is absence, yeah. He would just be listed as an excused absence.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify on that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, moving into public comment. Although I don't see anybody here, if there's anybody out in the lobby, please come forward. Seeing none, I will move into, uh, commission member comments. Uh, I will start to my right with, uh, Commissioner Faulkner, please.
I think I turned it the wrong way. Would like to thank staff and particularly, even though he's not here, thank Mr. Beck for providing us the opportunity to see the, uh, the Universal Design Home. Thought that was very interesting and, uh, reflects more modern thinking than, than when we built thirty years ago. So it definitely can see a lot of changes, and he's put a lot of work into it. Other than that, thank you to staff, and that's all.
Thank you, sir. Vice Sheriff Pfizer?
Um, I, too, uh, visited the Universal Home, and I, I really enjoyed the, the visit. Of course, the designer and me went home and like, well, I'd do this, I'd do this. But I thought it was really well done, and, um, it actually led to quite a conversation about what we would do to our house to make it work for us, um, which would be sell it and move to a house of one level. But, um, but it was really interesting, and I, I really liked the fact that we had the opportunity to do that. So I'd like to thank staff for, for putting it together for us.
Secretary Peterman?
Well, beans, everybody's mentioning the home. I think it was pretty cool. Unfortunately, it kind of puts you out there in the future saying, yeah, they're, they're targeting me. Anyway, um, thanks staff for all of their work that they do on a regular basis. That's all I got.
Commissioner Inger?
Thank you, staff. Um, I'm still a rookie, so bear with me. But I've been impressed with, uh, information and the communication that's been going on related to this. And it, it's making it easy for me to make the adjustment and up to speed with everything that's going on. So please thank the staff for all their efforts. I'd also like to thank my fellow commissioners for all their efforts and encouragement as we go along through this. We're all fighting in here together, so go from there. Anyway, thank you.
Commissioner Bowie?
I just, again, apologize for being late. I didn't want to be here. I didn't know if you guys had masks in the front or not. So I said, let me make sure I go ahead and get, get mine. But thank you to staff for, uh, your work, um, very diligent, very thorough. Echoing what, uh, the mayor said regarding, uh, this particular proposal for, um, the, the storage unit. I think it's much more appropriate, and it's adjacent to one and so forth. And, uh, so, uh, that, that was a little different than the sentiments from last week, or last meeting. Big voting day today, obviously. Um, I think Ward won, had a city council person, uh, race. I haven't heard anything, but I'll definitely check it out, so.
No results yet. I'm checking it right now.
Okay.
None in yet.
All right, so just want to thank you guys, and I appreciate it, everybody.
Mayor Turnbow?
Yeah, I really don't have anything.
While you're refreshing your results, sir.
I just refreshed the screen. There's still zero, so I've, nothing to report. But, uh, good meeting tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Um, thank you, staff, as always, and, and the commission, always a great conversation. If I had the powers that Mayor Turnbow does, I probably would have, uh, declared yesterday officially Baylor Day in the city of Raymore. Uh, I have to get the plug in there for my alma mater winning the national championship last night. Huh? Yeah, yeah, so, uh, so sick and bears, uh, for those of you who have any idea what that means. Other than that, I have nothing, uh, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Faulkner.
I move we adjourn this evening's meeting.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Faulkner, a second by Secretary Peterman, to adjourn. All those in favor? Seeing all the hands at seven, nothing, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.